For meeting to order, Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Announcement of executive session votes are required by disclosure person with the round of your laws. There were no votes taken. Like this offer the prayer. Gracious Lord, as we come before you today, we discuss the important matters, we ask for your guidance, you whisper. Help us to listen to the tenderly and one another with open hearts and minds. I also like to take a moment of silence for the people who were killed in the crashes in Washington, D.C. and Philadelphia. Smoke our flag. Registriation. In the event of an emergency, there are two exits leaving the council chambers, one to my right labeled exit leads out to the side of the building, to the very rear of the chambers through the double doors. Take a right to the stairway that leads out to the front parking lot. In the event of emergency, do not use the elevator. Ladies' room and men's room are straight outside the council chambers rear doors, men's room to the right, ladies' room to the left. Thank you, Acting Chief, or Real Chief. We have one presentation. I don't believe the young man is here from the Eagle Scout.
He's on his way to be here in a few minutes.
A few minutes, on his way. All right, I'll continue when we'll come back. I'd like to move the minutes of the January 21st, 2025 work session meeting to be approved and recorded. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Move the minutes of January 21st, 2025 open session meeting to be approved as recorded. Entertain a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Bruce is here. All right, I'll go to the next item. Item number seven, consider to discuss the act upon the following possible appointments and reappointments. Conservation Commission appointment with the term expiring July 2025.
Motion to appoint Reina Blumenthal.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. The Stomach Preservation Commission appointed with the term expiring February of 2027.
Motion to appoint Benjamin Case.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Housing Authority appointment with the term expiring January 2026.
Motion to appoint Kathleen Gerlach.
So, second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor, sign anybody that's saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Planning board appointment to the term expiring May of 2027.
Motion to appoint Daniel Slabota, Jr.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Land trust. No motion on the land trust.
Motion to appoint Susan Grettin as first alternate on the land trust with the term expiring September of '25.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Nays.
Motion fails, three to two. Any again, Bruce? Consider a public hearing, conduct a public hearing to consider to discuss the act upon zoning ordinance amendments to Article 9, special districts, to add Section 9.5 entitled Davis Liquid Waste Superfund Site Groundwater Protection Overlay District. I can open the public hearing.
Good evening, councilors. Mike Phillips, Town Planner. I believe you all have copies of the actual ordinance map with a list of properties that are listed in the overlay. Just by way of background, this has been kicking around for a number of years now. It has to do with preventing water withdrawal within an area around the Davis Superfund site. The responsible parties, an EPA, got together and we're trying to adopt some institutional controls at the site. And one of them is this ordinance that would prevent withdrawal of groundwater in this area to prevent or have impacts on their remediation efforts. The hope is that if no one's pumping here, it's not going to impact the direction of the plume or the speed at which the plume is moving. So this is an institutional control that I've seen used in other towns. We did it in North Smithfield around the stamina mill site. So the ordinance is before tonight for reading and adoption. And there are some exempt properties on it that are, have been identified in here. And they were identified, they do have wells, but they've allowed EPA to do testing at these sites so that they have a lot, they are considered to be exempt and can keep those wells. I don't know if there are any questions about that. I understand there is someone here who wants to have another look at it about one property, specifically the property is 50 lot 29, which I understand was not included at one point and is back in on this, in this map and in this ordinance. They want to come up and discuss why they think it should not be included. But other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions on Mr. Phillips?
I have a question, Mr. President. So does this run with the company, with the land itself or with, only as long as the company is there? Because I noticed it's titled the name of the company.
Well, it's, it's, it's not the name of the company, it's the name of the site.
Okay.
The Davis landfill, yeah.
So it's going to run with the part, whatever's there at that time?
Yeah. And whether at some point it may not be necessary to have it, I don't, I don't know how long it would have to be instituted. But that plume has been there a long time and it's probably going to be there for a long time to come.
Any other questions, Mr. Phillips?
How many properties are impacted?
I don't know offhand a list. It's around 40, 41.
Forty-one parcels?
Yep.
And are all the, are all the parcels that are depicted on the map impacted or there are adjoining parcels on here?
No, these are all the ones that have this, you know, overlay on them, all the ones that are listed. It doesn't involve, you know, ones that are above it. It's just those are the actual parcels that make up the district.
These are the actual parcels on?
That make up the district, yes.
On the map?
Yep.
Has any of these people given you any feedback at all?
We did hear from a couple of people came down to look at it. And I know there's a gentleman here who's, who has an exempt property and he, he had concern about it and just, you know, wanted to know if it would pass. If he sold the property, would that exemption go with it? And I assume that it would as long as, as long as the person buying the house would allow EPA to sample that well periodically to see if, you know, if there's any contamination.
So no opposition?
I haven't heard any, any great outcry from, no.
Thank you.
Mike, how many, how many properties are exempt right now?
I believe there were four. They're listed in. In section 5952D. Three, actually, there's three, I'm sorry. Three exemptions.
It used to be four.
Any other questions for Mr. Phillips? Can you, can you come up to the mic, please? And state your name and address, please.
Hi, Teresa Gallocy, 184 Mann School Road, Smithfield. Could we get a list of the properties that are both exempted and not exempted?
Yes.
And I think there is concern from neighbors whenever we see this topic brought up as to changes, possible development, possible profit from the current owner of the Davis family and possible changes to that property impacting what is already a pretty delicate environmental factor up there.
We will get you that information.
Thank you.
Any other folks like to speak on this?
Good evening. I'm Joe Carnavalli. I represent Fishing Bear Properties LLC, the owner of 512 Lot Road, assessors plaque 50, Lot 29. Tonight, we're here to ask for a brief continuation of council action on this ordinance that's before the council. We would like to be able to solicit some additional guidance from the EPA related to the area specifically to the west side of the quarry on this property. This property is substantial. It's 139 acres. If the council wants any additional background, Mr. Lucini of Fishing Bear Properties is here with me. He can detail the history of the property, at least since he took title and how the, the boundaries have then redrawn. And with that, I'll hand you to Mr. Lucini.
Which, which property is that?
This is assessors plaque 50, Lot 29.
Mr. Carnavalli, how long do you need?
I'm sorry?
How long do you need?
I would suggest a couple of weeks. The EPA could take a while.
Why don't we continue, we can, we can continue the public hearing for a month?
Okay.
Assess at that point in time as to whether or not you need any additional time and whether or not you heard back from the EPA.
That, that would work for us. Thank you.
Are we on any specific timeline that that would prevent, okay, thank you.
So, hi, my name is Greg Lucini. I probably met some of you along the way. I, I bought this piece of land from Billy Davis, Sr., about four years ago. And I obtained confirmation from the EPA that I'm a bona fide prospective buyer, meaning, you know, to qualify that, I have to confirm and they agree that I didn't cause the problem. I didn't contribute to the problem. I'm coming in with clean hands, as they say, to try and do something useful with the property. And it's part of what the EPA wants to do with their repurposing or repowering groundfield sites. And they specifically target solar for these sites. So with their support, I was able to develop a solar array out on their, on that, on that property. As my attorney mentions, 139 acres, but it was reconfigured in order for us to actually develop the solar array. Basically, I had to make the project bankable. And we reconfigured it so that none of the test wells and none of the plume went onto the property. So I've actually got 139 acres where the plume did not go. And they've actually been removing the test wells because they've been there for three decades, almost four decades now. And they've given all the evidence they needed that it didn't have, it didn't head in that direction. So what we would ask for is that rather than put the overlay on the entire 139 acres, we would draw a line about three quarters of the way across it. There's a quarry, you can see it on your map, that runs north-south. Draw a line down the middle of that quarry so that the west side of that is not covered by the overlay district.
Did you say there's solar on there now or?
Correct.
Is that the Lot Road solar?
Yes. It's 11 and a half megawatts project that I developed. I sold the project to Kira Sage and I own the land.
How many square feet is that, the solar?
The solar is on about 40 acres.
Forty acres, okay.
Of the 139.
Okay.
That was the zoning requirement at the time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Do you use the water, like any type of well, to operate the solar?
No.
Business? Okay.
We don't use any water.
How would this affect, affect the business?
It wouldn't.
It wouldn't? Okay.
Wouldn't affect the business. What it does is it allow, it would provide options for the future. If somebody wanted to develop the land to the west side of the quarry, for whatever purpose.
Okay.
Then it could possibly be developed. If the EPA, through their funding, if they were able to provide water to that side of the quarry, great, then I guess it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of development did you have in mind?
I don't have any development in mind right now for, for that area.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir in the back?
Good evening. I'm Glenn Gresko, 432 Lot Road. And I learned a long time ago, if I don't say something, then later I got nothing to stand on. So I just officially want to state that I'm against the prohibition, even though my property is now exempt, 432 Lot Road. I just don't want any problems coming up in the future. And I'm officially saying I'm against it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll keep the public hearing open until March 4th.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the, for one month.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Conduct the public hearing to consider to discuss the act of, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw the young man. Here's the young man. Step forward, young man. Adam Sloder for the Eagle Scout? Aaron, why don't you tell us what you have in mind? And where do you live?
So I was thinking of.
Where do you live, Aaron? Where do you live?
I live on 37 Green Bay Road.
Go ahead.
Yeah, in Smithfield. I was thinking of building a shed for the cross-country team so they can store their equipment and other things like vehicles too in Deerfield Park because we don't currently have a shed to store equipment in. And I think it would be helpful to have them.
Where in Deerfield Park?
Like on this.
Thanks.
So it looks like it's right in the middle of the soccer field?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, it's right here. I'm sorry.
It would be near the, it would be near the other shed that the stalker team stored their equipment in.
Oh, yes. Does it, does it structure there now? Okay.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Did you raise all the money?
No, I haven't yet. I'm just here to ask for permission to carry out the project.
Okay. Any questions? As we get this around the table, then we'll see what we can do for you. Now, do you run track right now?
Yeah.
So what's the next step for this young man here? What's the next step for this young man?
As long as he has approval to do it, we'll work with the DPW director and the box and rec director and help coordinate with them, so.
What's the DPW position on it? Are they in favor of it?
Gene Allen is here, if you'd like to, his thumb just got a thumbs up.
He said no, right? No objection.
Okay.
So, yeah, between the building official and those two departments, we'll work with them.
And we have to approve it from there?
Yeah.
Or they'll be all set?
Yeah, they'll be all set. It shouldn't be a problem. I think it'll be helpful to have some more storage out there.
Aaron, take your paperwork. Perfect. Thank you very much for coming in.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
And just one last thing. When you're looking to raise money, come and see us. All right. Thank you, Coach. So if you couldn't hear, Coach Bennett said the Sentinel Striders, the cross-country teams, and they're all going to chip in and help as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
I know Councilman Winfield, myself, will definitely donate, so come and see us. All right, great. I'm going to conduct a public hearing to consider discussing the act upon new Class D club food privilege beverage license for Roots Heaven Farm LLC, DBA Roots Heaven Farm LLC, located at 540 Douglas Pike, with the hours of operation to be Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., subject to compliance with all state regulations, local offices, final approval from the Department of Health and a certification of good standing for Rhode Island Division of Taxation. I declare this public hearing open.
Good evening. My name is Chinse Yuriyati and I'm representative for Roots Heaven Farm and just officially requesting the license for the Class D full privilege beverage license that we will use on our farm.
When is all the paperwork in order?
Other than what you see in your packet that's missing, everything else is good to go.
Yeah, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, kept close the hearing?
Yeah, you got a close. As long as the hearing.
Move that the Smithfield Town Council approve a new Class D club full privilege beverage license for Roots Heaven Farm located at 540 Douglas Pike.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Conduct the public hearing to consider to discuss the act upon approving the renewal in consignations beverage license as listed as applied, subject to the compliance of all state regulations, local offices, and certificate of good standings from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, El Taco LLC. Declare the public hearing open. Public hearing is closed. When is everything in order?
Everything is in order and then this will be the beginning of the transfer of this particular license.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve El Taco Loco LLC for a liquor license transfer.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Number nine, consider to discuss the act upon approving a new particular licenses for Roots Heaven and Farm LLC, DBA Roots Heaven and Farm LLC, located at 540 Douglas Pike, with the hours of operation of Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local offices, and final approval from DE, Rhode Island DEM of Health, Rhode Island Department of Health, excuse me.
Move that the Smithfield Town Council approve a new Vic drilling license for Roots Heaven Farm located at 540 Douglas Pike.
Have a second. A second. Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Consider to discuss the act upon approving the renewal of one entertainment license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local offices, El Taco LLC, LLC, DBA Don Bello Tequila, 55 Douglas Pike.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Number C, consider to discuss the act approving the renewal of one special dance license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local offices, El Taco LLC, LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Consider to discuss, number D, consider to discuss the act approving renewal of one particular only license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local offices, NEFL Incorporated, DBA New England Frozen Lemonade, 3 Austin Avenue, Unit 3.
Motion to approve, subject to the building officials clearance.
Second. Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Consider to discuss the act upon approving renewal of four mobile food truck licenses as listed as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations, as Costco Pascal, Chick or Nuggets, Palmonte LLC, and Paglioni 2000.
Move that the Smithfield Town Council approve the renewal of four mobile food truck licenses for lobster cart Rhode Island Chicked Out Nugs, Palmonte, and Palagi's Ice Cream.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. There's no old business, new business. Consider to discuss the act upon authorizing a pole petition for an island energy company to install a new pole down Anker of Roughstone Road. Mr. Gene.
Good evening. Gene Allen, Director of Public Works. I have no objections to the placement of this pole.
Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Consider to discuss the act upon authorizing a pole petition for an island energy to relocate two poles on Mann School Road. Mr. Gene.
No objections to these locations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Number C, consider to discuss the act of authorizing request for proposal to sell or lease at Smithfield Town landfill located at Zero Ridge Road, AP 42 Lot 91 for sole purpose of installing a ground mounted solar project. What is that? Mr. Manager?
Good evening. Again, Mike Phillips, Town Planner. The Ridge Road landfill, we had looked at putting on RFP a couple of years ago and received some proposals to do solar on that and adjoining piece. Since then, we've had a reconsideration of, you know, where we want to have solar projects. So we've put out, we're suggesting another RFP that would limit the solar array to just the landfill portion of those two lots. That's already cleared. And we've had some significant interest from solar developers to do that. The bonus would be that anyone doing this would have to cap the landfill for us. Reinter, there's a lot of solid waste that's still on the surface there. They would have to reinter it, cover it, and cap it, and then look at doing a solar array after that point. And there would be two different options available. Either they would lease the land from us, or some of them have posited the idea of actually purchasing the property from us so that they would, they would own it outright, you know, develop solar on their own property. So we're looking for proposals from, you know, qualified developers who have experience with landfills, so.
Any question, Mr. Phillips?
Does the RFP contain the fact that the, any hitter or person who puts in a proposal has to cap the landfill?
Yes.
Yep.
It's in there?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I know that there was some talk a few years ago when this was getting brought up about the possibility of other renewable energy sources there, like wind. Is that still on the table or is that not something that's being considered at this point?
We don't have, we currently don't allow wind energy anywhere in town, so.
Okay, that, I know that was a thing a while ago.
Yeah.
No longer.
No, we, we had looked at some sites back when, 15 years ago now, about doing some, some wind, but it's not something that's on our books anymore.
Okay.
As far as.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Consider to discuss the act upon authorizing a bit of water architectural design. Consider discussing the Act upon authorizing a bid award of architectural design services for the ride necessity of the school construction stage two, application on behalf of the school department.
Good evening, Don Bart, Superintendent of Schools. Behind me is our OPMs from Colliers, Patrick Robler, and Deb Faith, and our team. I'd like to amend the motion to read approval, requesting approval to enter into negotiations for an architectural firm.
So we're just, what you're asking, Superintendent, is to get rid of fee structure, is that the only change?
That's correct, yes. So somehow, but there was miscommunication between coming from the school department when we sent it over and the writing, so I wanted to make sure you knew this is just permission to negotiate with the top scorer, and then we would, of course, come back the fee structure.
So what exactly are you negotiating in terms of fee structure? You're saying encompassing everything?
That's correct.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Excellent. I'm Patrick Robler, I'm with Colliers Project Leaders with OPM for the Stage One and Stage Two project, as well as the two emergency projects. So the current status of the RFQ was to get a qualifications-only proposal from qualifying firms, and we received three. Those proposals were then reviewed by a reviewing committee, and then we looked at some binary criteria regarding insurance and those sorts of things. And at this point in time, what we are looking for is permission to move from a qualifications-based proposal to having the most qualified bidder, or the highest scoring bidder, select or provide a fee structure to then negotiate, and then we would have to then come back and have that approved as like the actual bid, right? Very similar to the way that Colliers bid the Stage One and Stage Two, so it was qualifications-only, and then we came back with the fee structure.
So I thought we were getting rid of fee structure, can you?
I'm sorry?
You just said you're doing fee structure, but then I just asked, are we getting rid of fee structure? You're saying we're doing everything?
Yes.
Just to confirm, okay. There's just a lot of, okay.
So it's just broken up into parts.
Oh, all right, okay.
Yeah, the qualifications-only bid is to try to make sure that we get a good qualified company, and then we go into the price negotiations. If for some reason the highest scoring bidder comes in at a very high cost, then we would look to go to the next bidder to get a pricing proposal.
So you're not specifically looking at SLAM?
We are specifically looking at SLAM as the highest scoring bidder at this time. So the packet that was provided, we had scoring sheets, there are two that are there, one is based on average, and the other is based on just a raw score number, they work out to be the same percentage, so if we're looking at SLAM score, they scored approximately 83% and they were the highest scoring firm that submitted a proposal. So SLAM is who we would be pursuing to reach out to them and say, please provide your pricing proposal, they would send that over, we would negotiate that with them, and with Smithfield Public Schools, and then we would come back with that fee structure and cost, with that as a motion to be approved, to then enter into a contract with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to clarify something with you, because I noticed that you corrected yourself a few times when you said best qualified, and then changed it to highest scoring. Is there a difference in that?
It's the same, it's the same thing.
And so the reason for that was, I said best qualified, in my head, that means the qualifications
that we set out, which is directly related to score, so I was just trying to simplify.
I just want to make sure that that was the same.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It is.
Any other questions?
What timeframe are you looking at?
Rapid, so we are going to do our best to try and get this contract negotiated, and then be in front of you all in the next go-round.
Great, thank you.
See what we can do.
Any more questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll try to say this correctly, so.
If you'd like, I have a proposed.
Oh, you have a proposed, okay.
In a letter? Do you have a motion? The school will be similar to that.
This is the same thing, correct? It looks the same. Well, that's just inclusive of that, yeah. So, motion to that the Smithfield Town Council approve the advancement of SLAM architectural services to the pricing negotiation phase of the RFQ 1825 for Smithfield Public Schools, Ride Necessity of School Construction Stage Two Design Services and Emergency Products.
Second. Any discussion?
I just have a question, is that still subject to the school committee approval, or is that not subject?
For which?
The original motion requests it being subject to school committee approval.
Ah, yes, so that was approved, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, so, nothing.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. E, consider discussing the Act upon authorizing submission of the Ride Stage One application for school improvements on behalf of the school department.
So the Ride Stage One submission is complete, it's been assembled into a single document through your review. This go-around is going to be a little bit different for Ride in general, for Stage One and Stage Twos, those have always been binders, paper submissions that we've done, and they've now moved to an electronic portal. So you'll notice as you're going through that document, that Jacobs report shows up in there twice, it's just because of how we have to upload it. And so basically after this meeting, if we get the approval that we're looking for, we will submit the Stage One, ideally by the end of the week, so we'll be in early before the 15th, and then we will hear back in two months or so on whether or not that Stage One has been granted, and then that will move us into the Stage Two portion.
I noticed that a lot of the data relative to the schools was from 2017.
Yes.
Could you explain that?
Absolutely.
And the, you know, the 1,200-page version even had winter school mentioned in it.
Absolutely, so the Jacobs report is the, it was the report that was generated back and around that timeframe to assess the facilities within Rhode Island for Rhode Island Public Schools. So right now, we have just finished going through a period where Bureau Veritas is the new report generator, so they've gone and they've visited all the schools around Rhode Island, and they are assembling those reports, we are expecting those by the end of the month, draft version should be sent to the town or the school, and then Ride will review those, and then they will publish them very similarly to the Jacobs report. And so the way that we're working with the Stage One and Stage Two submission, after speaking with Ride, is that we are submitting with the Jacobs report, which is the report that is existing right now, so it's the only one that we have to go off of for facilities assessment. And then once the Bureau Veritas report comes out, that will get swapped out for the Jacobs report.
In regards to the school building committee, I know that, as I understand, that the Boyle Committee was appointed by the town council, is that right?
Correct.
So would these people here, and I noticed there's one that's blank, would this have to come, this is a part of the application, just a side note, would that have to?
So.
Before us?
So it will come before you, and you're correct that it would be appointed.
So last night, the school committee made a recommendation, so we were planning coming to a later meeting to give a recommendation, but the town under the charter would be appointing the building committee.
Okay, so we'd create this and then appoint these people at a later date, because this is new, gotcha.
That's correct.
Just wanted to confirm, thank you very much.
One of the advantages with the Ride Stage One process is that it's establishing need. They put a lot of checkboxes for us to fill that they want to make sure that we're considering, so even if we don't have a fully approved, settled-on building committee at the time of the submission for the Stage One, we'll be able to come back during the Stage Two and say, here's the list, they just want to know that we're looking down the road, right?
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
So very similarly, we should have...
Motion that the Smithfield Town Council approves the right necessity of school construction stage one application to be submitted to Ride by February 15, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Big first step.
Number 12, public comment. Anyone like to speak from the public? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?